Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening, and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. I call this meeting of the Sioux Falls Planning Commission to Order. We have some instructions on the board. I won't read through those exhaustively, but I will ask that everybody silence any electronic devices out of respect for everybody else. When you do come to the podium to present any information, I ask that you come forward, state your name and your address for the record. And then please limit your comments to no more than five minutes to allow us to hear everyone who would like to speak. Good evening, and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. I call this meeting of the Sioux Falls Planning Commission to Order. We have some instructions on the board. I won't read through those exhaustively, but I will ask that everybody silence any electronic devices out of respect for everybody else. When you do come to the podium to present any information, I ask that you come forward, state your name and your address for the record. And then please limit your comments to no more than five minutes to allow us to hear everyone who would like to speak. At this time, we will consider the consent agenda. Denise, please read the items on the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item one is approval of minutes. Item two A is petition REZ 011948 2020, rezoning from the RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density District to the RD2 Townhome Residential Suburban and Office Districts located at 2201 West Bitterroot Street. Item two B, petition REZ 011974 2020, rezoning from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to the LW Live-Work District located at 1404 South Foss Avenue. Item two C, petition REZ 011978 2020, rezoning from the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District to the RT2 Townhome Residential Traditional District located at 1212 South Main Avenue. Item two D, petition PUD 011973 2020, Initial Development Plan Amendment in the University of Sioux Falls Planned Unit Development to construct an accessory maintenance building located at 1101 West 22nd Street. Item two E, petition PRI 012003 2020, Preliminary Subdivision Plan for 57th Street and Bonson Avenue located south of East 57th Street and east and west of South Bonson Avenue. Item three, Consent Agenda Approval.
Okay, that constitutes the items in the consent agenda. As we vote on those, that will approve all of those items. So are there any objections to any of those six items that anyone in the audience would like to present or discuss on one of those six items? If not, we'll take commissioner input. Yes, sir. Which item do you have concern about? B, or number two B? Okay, then we will move that to the regular agenda so we can have discussion on it when we get to that point. So are there any others that would like to comment on other items in that consent agenda list? Yes? What's that? Two E, I think that was? Okay. Right, the other half of it is. I think she wants to speak to apparently the one portion for the preliminary subdivision plan. Is that correct? Right, and I think that's a similar item to the first one in the regular agenda as well. Okay, so we'll move items two B and two E to the regular agenda. Are there any other objections to the list of the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. I'd entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda, moving those two items to the regular.
Mr. Chair, so moved.
Second.
It's been moved and... What's that?
Second, Lukey.
Very good. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as amended or as adjusted. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Okay. Do we need to do a roll call for that, Denise? Sorry, I skipped that part.
No, no roll call is needed, and generally the phone will be a little bit of a delay
Okay.
when they're voting.
Okay, thank you. So let's move on to the regular agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the regular agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the regular agenda as amended. Johnson.
Kurt.
Second, Nyberg.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the regular agenda as adjusted. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Okay. All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Item two B, petition REZ 011974 2020, rezoning from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to the LW Live-Work District located at 1404 South Foss Avenue.
Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application by Luke Jesson with Lloyd Companies. The applicant is looking at rezoning a small portion of this lot on the west side. That's currently zoned RD1 to the LW Live-Work District. They're looking to construct this mixed-use building within the center portion of the lot, and then there'll be some area on the western portion there that'll still be left over as part of this rezoning. They are planning on that part that's going to be rezoned and the leftover part to do either a townhome or a twin home type development there. And so it won't be, it'll be kind of that transition from this proposed mixed-use building to the existing single-family uses to the west and the twin home to the south. The proposed mixed-use development meets a criteria of the comprehensive plan for the majority of the existing live-work lot. However, staff feels that additional level of transition should be required between the proposed four-story building, as you can see here in the middle of the lot, and those existing single-family uses to the west of Foss Avenue. Therefore, staff is recommending a placing a condition on this specific rezoning to only allow the AD1, AD2, or AD3 form on this western portion that you can see there in the green. So that would ensure that the applicant couldn't build anything over a four-to-eight unit, two-story townhome, which should provide a better transition from this building to those existing single-family use. Staff does recommend approval of this rezoning with the following condition that I had indicated. Development of this parcel, that west parcel, is regulated to the AD1, AD2, or AD3 forms only. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from the commission? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Jason. Is the applicant here this evening? State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Luke Jesson with Lloyd Companies at 101 South Ridge Street. Jason, to give a great overview of the project, basically, we're just looking to zone the whole parcel as one so that we can develop a cohesive community when we add those townhomes in, and that there's not additional buffer yards between both of our own properties or both of our own buildings. So really, it's just to kind of clean up the site plan overall, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from the commission?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this item? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Pat Peace. I live at 1212 South Sunnyview Drive, which I believe will be west of there, about a, well, which would be, I can see my house in the picture on the left, of this area. When this whole area was going to be turned into the project that it's become, we were guaranteed, or we weren't guaranteed, we were told there would always be a buffer of single-family dwellings before it went to probably, to a duplex or might be a multiple in the area of a duplex, you know, not an apartment building, before it got to commercial or residential. From what I can see, it's not really doing that. It's going to go straight into commercial, and that's a variation of what they originally said they were going to do. We don't want that, or at least I know, I speak for my neighbors as well. I don't think they're here, but as far as we have talked, we don't want that. We don't want to lose that buffer space. We feel that field is very good size. There's plenty of room for this to be moved further to the east without, you know, I don't see that there's anything to the east that's going to be hampered at this point. There's anything built there. So we have commercial already along East 10th. We have it along Highway 11. Looks like there's something coming up on 26th Street. I don't see why we need more business-type things located there. To me, we don't. We have everything we need within three-quarters of a mile or a half a mile. I don't know why we would need to have a work-type development of any sort there.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the commissioners? Seeing none, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come to speak to this one?
Marcia Didi. I live at 1309 South Foss Avenue. You can't hear me?
That's better.
I live directly across from this project. We were just told that this was going to be going in. Our question has to do, there's water, like a small pond, which we're told they're going to divert that to someplace else. Why? It's there. Why not divert this project elsewhere? Plus, the whole west side of Foss Avenue coming from 26th Street up are 55 and over. We're suddenly going to put in this complex, and we're not going to limit who gets to go in there. So we're now going to have, plus when Foss Avenue goes through, we're going to have a freeway. If you guys don't think that, I can tell you there's two dozen cars that come down and turn around because they think it's already through. It's not going to be a fun place for over 55 people to be living on. If you're trying to chase this out, tell us. But there's already a huge apartment complex across the way from us. Huge. I think we could look at something. We talked to Mr. Roach, who's on this staff for this project, and expressed our concerns about, fine, only rent of over 55. I don't think that'll happen. You guys can promise all kinds of things, but I don't think it'll happen. That there's going to be injuries down there. We've had to beg for a stop sign before you entered onto the street right across Rosa Parks School, because there wasn't any, and nobody was stopping. I don't think we need a four-story, three-story complex, or like the previous gentleman said, work area. There's going to be active generations. We're told there's senior housing coming in there. Why can't this kind of be geared for seniors? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none. We'll close public testimony and entertain a motion for sake of discussion from the commission.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions for the applicant. Would you like me to ask those first, or would you like a motion on the floor?
We can do that of the applicant. The applicant could come forward.
Yeah, Luke, I was wondering if you could speak to some of the concerns a little bit there. If you could talk about, a little bit further about the plans for the development. There seems to be a little bit of confusion about the live-work zoning. You talk about the four-story mixed-use development a little bit, and what the specific intent is there, and if you could also mention the transition on the west side of the property with the townhomes. That'd be great.
Yeah. So right now, the area in blue is already zoned live-work. So the building we're proposing is appropriate for that zoning designation. What we're doing is cleaning up that RD1 section, and we plan on building a townhome-style apartment complex, but it would be, you know, of small scale, four, six, about that many units on that portion as a transition from that higher four-story building down to that RD1 form. And then that's just on Foss, and then across from Foss, there would be, it looks like it's zoned RS right now, so that would remain RS. I'm not proposing any changes there. As far as our four-story building goes, it's live-work, so the first floor would be commercial in nature. Basically, neighborhood services. We would look for tenants like chiropractors' office, a dentist, things like that, that would fall within that neighborhood services category. And then there would be apartments on the second, third, and fourth floor.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Any other questions from commissioners? Doesn't look like it. Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions, Eric, before we move to a motion? Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Nyberg.
Second, Johnson, Kurt.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item two B. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, as I look at the previous, or the current zoning versus the rezone that's going here, it looks like the portion immediately adjacent to Foss Avenue is still going to be in that appropriate twin home transition period. And something I think we should clarify, if okay with Commissioner Nyberg, is that the motion would be limiting to the three forms as stated by staff in the staff report. And I would second that, too, but in absence of cleaning that up, this still appears to have an appropriate transition of the single-family to the higher-rated twin home, townhome, and then into the live-work. The transition seems to flow nicely for me, so I'll be in favor of this one.
Okay. Other discussion?
I'd echo that also, too. I mean, if you look at the rest of what's zoned around it, it does flow. And there's a great transition from live-work into going into single-family.
Okay, other discussion? Since we weren't specific about the extra conditions, shall we do an amendment for that item and entertain a motion?
Yeah, I'll do a substitute motion if I could. And I will move to approve this with the condition proposed by staff, which is development of this parcel is regulated to the AD1, AD2, or AD3 forms only.
Second, Lukey.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for a substitute motion. Any other discussion about the substitute motion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Item two E, petition PRI 012003 2020, Preliminary Subdivision Plan for 57th Street and Bonson Avenue located south of East 57th Street and east and west of South Bonson Avenue.
Okay, so this is the preliminary subdivision plan for the rezoning at 57th and Bonson Avenue. We will talk about the rezoning next, so this specifically has to do with streets, lot layout, water sewer, that kind of stuff. The applicant here is Luke Jesson with Lloyd Companies. They are looking at constructing on this parcel some mixed-use buildings up to 57th Street, some three-story apartments, and then some two-story apartments along the south property line. The applicant has, there's only minor tasks that are left within the preliminary subdivision plan process once, when the staff report was written. As you can see here, this kind of gives you an idea of the basic street and block layout. They will bring a street from the east, and then also there'll be a street at 57th and Bonson. That would be a lighted intersection, which should handle most of the traffic coming from this development. And then along that southwest corner, they will be stubbing out a street to the west for future development when Mr. Ryder develops his land. They do have to have a connection, so they have to stub out that street. Water and sewer, as you can see, is coming from the east and the north. They're proposing two detention ponds there along the north part of the lot, and then also utilizing storm sewer within the existing, or when they put in the streets, there'll be some storm sewer to be able to flow all that water into the city's storm sewer. Because there's only minor tasks left with this preliminary subdivision plan, staff does recommend approval of this subdivision, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Jason. Is the applicant here? Come forward.
Luke Jesson with Lloyd Companies, 101 South Ridge Street. I'll speak just to the subdivision plan right now versus our proposed rezoning, but we have proposed the different streets within, based on some of the city's comments. We've moved East Vandabel Street slightly south to provide more space on the 57th Street intersection. And then we also added East Diablo Street for connection to the west. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions from the commission? Seeing none, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this subdivision plan? Come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Patricia Anderson, 3602 East Woods Edge, and I live right behind the stuff they want to do. And it's, that whole block is nothing but people in their probably 70s on up. And we're used to having the peace and the quiet of the neighborhood, and we're not happy about two- and three-story buildings going behind us. We will be able to see nothing but brick. And I just, you know, we've lived there for quite a while, and we enjoy the openness of it. And we understood, well, I know we did when we bought our twin home, that they assumed that there'd be all twin homes put back there. And now we're going to have a two-story apartment building, and then a three-story, and then I don't know what they're going to put on 57th. But we're just not happy with it at all, and we don't think it's necessary to put more apartments up there. When down the block, or down about a mile, there's all kinds of land they could put all the apartments they want. It won't interfere with people's lives.
And this is related to specifically the street layout and the driveway entrances and some of those kinds of things? Did you have any thoughts about those as well?
Well, it won't interfere with me because I don't live right on close, I live about three buildings in from Bonson. So that shouldn't really bother me, but it's just the idea that I like looking out, watching the cars. I watch the airplanes go by and the balloons and stuff. They put all these buildings in there, I'll no longer be able to see them. If they'd keep them lower, I could at least watch the airplanes and the balloons. I might not be able to watch the traffic. But I just, I hate to see my neighborhood messed up. We're all quiet. We walk every night and visit with the neighbors, and it's a close neighborhood, and I just don't want to see them louse it up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the commissioners? Okay. Anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to this preliminary subdivision plan? Come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Jeff Ryder. Address is 26804 Southeastern Avenue. I helped build this project. This is my project. Lived there for 30 years. I made this thing happen. Not very happy with the idea of East Diablo going through. I'm concerned about the neighborhoods having streets on their front side and the back side of their property. I don't know when Jeff Ryder is going to sell out. I'm in my 60s. I plan on being there another 20 years, but who knows? Only one guy knows, and he doesn't tell us that. When they presented this project two weeks ago on the computer, they had two-story apartment buildings on the backsides of those twin homes. And yes, a lot of people like to look at the horses, the alfalfa field, and 57th Street, but, you know, this is progress. You can't stop progress. I think that when people think, I'd rather have maybe neighbors come out in my backyard on the two-story apartment buildings rather than the streets of East Diablo. And I understand that the city of Sioux Falls would like East Diablo to go all the way through to Southeastern Avenue. I don't know, that can be an eminent domain where you can take that from me or not. I don't know. But for near-future plans of East Diablo going all the way to Southeastern Avenue, that's going to have to be an eminent domain takeover, because I'm not ready to move out. If I don't wake up tomorrow, maybe my kids and my wife will have other plans, but I would think that the neighbors would much rather have a two-story apartment building with possibly neighbors to be able to communicate and be neighborly with other people rather than a street, but, you know, if I won the lottery, this property wouldn't even be for sale. But I'm not in a position to be able to pay that kind of money for that land to get $2,000 an acre, or $2,000 rent for the alfalfa field. I mean, it just doesn't make sense. And this was my plan. This was my plan. That's why I had this all done, because if I was bought, I built my horse farm 20 miles out of town, I wouldn't even have this situation. But this was my plan based upon Scottsdale, Arizona. 30 years ago, all the horse shows were on Bell Road. I don't know if you guys are familiar with Scottsdale. But if you go down there, Scotts, Bell Road, there's nothing with horse, there's no horse farms there anymore at all, and that's progress. And I think everybody who bought twin homes knew that someday Jeff Ryder is going to develop this property. So everybody knew this was coming, and of course, came sooner than I wished it to be. So I just concerned about East Diablo for the people that have twin homes with streets on both, on the front side and the back side. And you know there's going to be people that are going to start up that motorcycle or that hot rod car at 6:00 in the morning or 5:30 in the morning. So just, I just think I have some concerns, because when they addressed this on the public meeting on the computer, they didn't show any street going by. It was all, it was all two-story apartment buildings. And they talked about a two-foot, or a four-foot, or a six-foot berm. Of course, I would like a six-foot berm on the west side of my property, or on the east side of my property, but of course, they're saying that that's not in their plan. So just want to let you know who I am and how this project ever came about, okay? Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Jason, I wondered if you could come forward and address the Diablo Street adjustment. I think the city had some input on that.
Yeah, the original plan for this site that was submitted by Lloyd did not have a street on that west side, southwest corner. That was something that engineering, our engineering design standards requires them to be able to have a connection to the neighbor to the west. So that's why that is put in there. And you guys know this, and I know this, you just, you have different opinions. Some people would rather be right next to the building. Some people would actually be right next to a street. Some people would be, or would rather be right next to a dry, it just, it really depends. I mean, we've heard it all different ways. So I can't speak to what they would like, but that's where they're showing the street for the stubout to the property to the west, which they're required to do at this time.
And this is just preliminary. As we know, there's a lot more steps in the subdivision process as we move forward for all this stuff, so. But it is a city recommendation based upon their standards.
Yeah, Lloyd wouldn't want to, I mean, if they didn't have to do that, they wouldn't, obviously.
Right, okay, thank you. Any other questions from the commission? Yes, Larry?
So a question, Jason. So East Diablo, so is it because they can't get through on East Vendell Street that going across, that that has to be put in?
Yeah, you can't go to the west on there, and that was always, when we worked with Mr. Ryder, or Mike Cooper did with this whole area, that was all kind of shown going over to Southeastern Avenue. So if you look at that whole division... So, if you look at that whole division, subdivision to the south Whispering Woods, there's no connection to Southeastern unless you curve around and go down quite a ways. So this is trying to get another connection to Southeastern Avenue for all this traffic to go through. Uh, otherwise, you're pretty much putting everybody on Bonson and 57th Street, which it can hold a lot of traffic. It's a lighted intersection, but you still need another, another way west at some point to get over to the other arterial street.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission? Okay. Thank you, Jason. Uh, you've already been up once, I think, on this item.
Yeah, I wanted to talk about the road beside Bonson.
Is there any other questions from the audience? Well, we'll be touching on this same project again with the next item, so I think I'll close, uh, public testimony on this particular item for the subdivision, uh, and I'd entertain commission action.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 2E, Johnson Kurt.
Second, Johnson Katie.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve this item 2E for the subdivision. Any other discussion?
Um, Mr. Chair, the, the only problem I'm having with this right now is, is the street backing up to the neighbors. Um, there's, I, I can't find too many spots in town where that is done. Um, and I know this area, well, we, we've sold a lot of homes and properties in this area, and we knew that basically down the road, this would be developed into something like Mr. Ryder talked about. Uh, but I don't think they planned on having a road in their backyard. That's usually, you have a, a house and another house and then a road. And that's, that's the concern that I have on that. So I will be voting this down.
Okay. Other discussion? Okay. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 All those opposed, say no.
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 That's two noes, three yeses. Motion passes. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I could just make a quick comment to staff. Uh, on my staff report, this agenda item was listed as 5D as opposed to 2E. Just a typo there to address. My packet has two 5Ds in other words, but anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Item 5A, petition REZ 011986 2020, rezoning from the AG Agriculture District to the RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density, RA2 Apartment Moderate Density, and LW Live Work Districts located south of East 57th Street and east and west of South Bonson Avenue.
Uh, this is the rezoning that's going along with the one we just heard, the preliminary subdivision plan. Uh, the applicant is once again Luke Jessen with Lloyd Companies. Uh, they're looking at rezoning roughly, uh, fifteen point seven-three acres from the AG Agricultural District, uh, to the RA1 Apartment Residential District on the south portion, RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density in the center portion, and then some live-work, uh, zoning adjacent to East 57th Street. Uh, they are proposing, uh, to construct a new development with apartments and mixed-use buildings. Uh, they're looking at doing two-story apartments on the south portion adjacent to the existing twin homes, and then some three-story apartments in the middle portion, and finally, uh, two mixed, uh, use buildings adjacent to East 57th Street. Uh, this was the original concept that was submitted, uh, from Lloyd Companies. Uh, we, they did hold a virtual neighborhood meeting that went pretty well. I think there was roughly twenty neighbors that were, were on it, so they could ask some questions. Uh, from those questions, some of their main concerns are, were three-story apartments, specifically the one on the west side that faces north and south. Uh, they were concerned about some of the, uh, people being able to overlook into the twin home there. Uh, the traffic concerns, which, uh, most of the traffic, we believe, will go to 57th and Bonson, 'cause you, 'cause otherwise you can't go south on Bonson and get to 69th Street. You gotta kind of loop around because you can't get across the existing drainage ditch. Uh, drainage, they discussed some drainage issues. Uh, I kind of went through that a little bit in the preliminary subdivision plan, that they will be constructing some ponds to hold, and then that will be filtered into the, uh, city's, uh, stormwater sewer system. So, uh, Lloyd Companies took those suggestions and also the suggestions from our engineering department specifically to have a west access over to the, the property to the west. And this is kind of the, the difference in the concept plan that they were showing. Um, they moved that apartment building that was running north and south to the west a little ways and ran it the opposite way, so people in their decks will be looking to the north and south. Plus, there'll be some additional space between that east, east wall and the existing twin homes. They will, they will have, are proposing to have that road on the south side. There will also be some grassy area between that road and those existing twin homes. It won't be backing up straight to that road. Um, and then those three-story buildings will be quite a ways away from, probably close to, you know, roads eighty foot right away. It's probably over a hundred feet from those existing twin homes. Um, and pretty much everything else, they, they shifted a little bit, but, but kind of stayed relatively similar. But they tried to push some of those three-story buildings more in the center of the, of the lot and actually eliminated two of the apartments on that southwest corner, um, and put the street in there with some, with some green space. Um, this is, a- as we know, the intersection of 57th Southeastern is identified as a neighborhood employment center. It's been that way since 2010. As we know, neighborhood employment centers allow commercial, mixed-use apartments with those transitions, and typically those go to the first access point. If you look at 57th Street, first at, major access point is Bonson Avenue. So this really does fit in with the city's, uh, comprehensive plan. That's where all, majority of the traffic's gonna be. To have twin homes, single-family really just doesn't work on that specific intersection. Um, as I in- indicated, the proposed zoning does meet the spirit in the tenth of the neighborhood employment designation. Um, they are, also are providing those transitions. They're having their live-work buildings up against the, the, one of the busiest streets in Sioux Falls, 57th Street. It's a limited access arterial street. That'll be the three-story mixed-use buildings, and then they'll transition as they go south to three-story apartments. And then as they get adjacent to those existing twin homes, they're going down to two-story apartments, um, adjacent to those existing twin homes. And then they will also have to provide those buffer yards, uh, depending on where it's located, Level A and Level B, and that'll provide fences, berms, landscaping, different uses like that. So, as I had indicated, the subject application is consistent with the Shape Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan. The necessary land use transition will exist, and finally, those recover, required buffer yards should alleviate any incompatibilities with those adjacent land use. Uh, staff does recommend approval of this rezoning, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the commission? Okay. Hearing none. Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Good evening, once again. Um, Jason did a great job again of explaining our site plan, um, explaining the project. So, like, like we said, talking through our process, we looked at 57th Street as being one of the biggest, busiest streets in Sioux Falls and proposing live-work there. Um, same thing is first floor commercial uses, um, those neighborhood services, um, and then stepping it back to just apartments, three-story apartment buildings, and then stepping it back again to, um, that RD1, um, or RA1, excuse me, um, with those two-story buildings adjacent to the twin homes. As Jason mentioned, we held a neighborhood meeting on April 20th. Um, there were twenty-three people in attendance, um, of that meeting, and we fielded lots of questions. Um, I'm just gonna touch on about four of the main topics that came up. Um, the first one was drainage. So, there was some concern about the drainage on that site. Um, and when you compare the two plans that Jason had, um, shown, we've added additional detention ponds and spread that out throughout the site. So we've tried to address that as best we can, and we'll continue to address that and meet all the city's standards, um, as we work through those civil engineering plans. Um, the second one, um, as Jason mentioned, was some concerns about, um, the three-story buildings having the decks facing the directly adjacent, um, twin homes when they're next to each other. So what we did is we, um, as we worked through, there was a lot of shifting in things that happened, but we did, um, shift one of those buildings so that none of those decks on the three-story buildings are adjacent to a twin home or are facing a twin home that's directly adjacent to it. Um, so we were able to fix that up. Um, the third one, there were concerns about, um, the two-story buildings to the south adjacent to the twin homes, but, um, we feel that these are compatible uses. If it were zoned for single-family or additional twin homes, those can go up to two stories as well on thirty-five feet. So, we're, we're not building any higher than, um, an, another use may, um, be able to build as well. Um, and then the final item that was of concern, um, that kept reoccurring was the buffer yard. And as Jason said, we're gonna be required, depending on the, the adjacencies for Level A and B buffer yards, and we plan to, um, comply with all of those. And, um, depending on whether that's berming, fencing, and landscaping, that'll depend as we adjust our drainage plans and, um, get deeper into the site planning, but we will comply with all of those, um, buffer yard requirements. Happy to answer any other questions you might have?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, so Luke, uh, the first concept's probably the one that you really truly like, correct?
That was our initially proposed concept, yeah. Um, as we worked through that, um, there were a couple issues. I mean, the, adding the drainage ponds, we think was a, a very good, um, change to the project. Um, and then as we met with traffic, um, they did require another connection to the west. Um, and then we also, East Vandabel Street, um, you can tell, shifted slightly south so that there's, um, the required distance back from Bonson Avenue. So that kind of made the whole site just shift a little bit. So I think there's, there's good in both site plans.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Luke, can you talk a little bit about the, uh, timing? I see we've got four phases here, and I know it's, uh, right now, and the timing of anything is quite uncertain, but for the sake of the neighbors, could you kind of talk about your timeline on this project?
Yeah, we feel really good about apartments in Sioux Falls right now. Um, occupancy's good, um, and we're, we're not hesitating from that perspective. Um, we, with all of our approvals and things like that, we would anticipate of starting this project this summer yet. So, um, we're anticipating August 1st internally, um, with our team, as, you know, plan gets, gets submitted and, you know, building permits go through and, you know, the architects do their work and the engineers, those dates can shift, but right now we're targeting August 1st. We would start by punching Bonson Avenue through, um, so that we could hopefully get that paved yet, um, this fall, so that, um, the paving's in before winter, um, so that when we would open bill, some of the buildings next spring, um, that street's already in. We would start with the south portion of the site. We've gone back and forth between, um, that Phase 1 and Phase 2, which one starts first. And I think it really depends on, um, initially, we were gonna start on the east side first, and then we switched to the west. But it really depends on once we get those surveys completed and, um, when we understand the grading that needs to happen on the site, um, that's gonna dictate which side, east-west, we start on, but we would start on the south and work our way to the north with the 57th Street buildings coming last.
Other commissioner questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this item? Come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Carl Meyerhoff, uh, 5204 West Earth, Woods Edge Trail. Um, the, the two, uh, the two-story apartment houses, uh, along the, uh, south side there, uh, they moved the three-story, uh, because, uh, they were overlooking the houses on the, the twin homes on the, on the east side. Uh, and we noticed in the first set of drawings that the two-story apartments were, um, uh, farther set north of the property lines than the second set of drawings. And so I, the, what question I have is, is what, um, how far are the two-story apartments going to be from the, um, the property lines on the Woods Edge Trail homes? That's, that's all I have.
Okay. This is a preliminary plan, but, um, Jason, can you speak to that item?
Uh, yeah, just from talking to Luke. Luke says they shifted about four feet to the south, uh, and that was because of the shift of the road Van, Vandalay or whatever it's called, sorry. Um, they have to be, those apartment complexes have to be a minimum of twenty-five feet from the property line. That's required by ordinance. I'm not sure exactly what he has on there, but the difference between this distance and this distance is four feet, he said, so.
Okay. And again, you said earlier that it has, and, uh, there's also a buffer yard there? Or is that not a buffer yard?
Yes, they would have a buffer yard there, I believe, 'cause they'd be MD1s against twin, uh, it'd be probably be a Level A, so berm or fence, um, and then some landscaping units back there.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to this item? Okay. Seeing none, I'll, uh, close public testimony and we'll move to, um, a motion by the board.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve Nyberg.
Second, Johnson Kurt.
It's been moved and seconded, uh, to approve this item number 5A. Uh, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair. Um, I just keep going back to the street, even though it was on the last, uh, couple items ago, but it, the first concept to me like is one of the best concepts for the neighborhood. Um, reasoning for that is basically for the street going in the backyard, knowing, selling homes, it's gonna be harder to sell a hu- a house there that has a street going in the backyard than the proposed first concept. Um, I don't know if the city can change the way that that road goes, and if we can maybe do the, the initial concept, but just looking at what we've sold in the past, it's gonna be a harder sell to sell your house with the street in the back. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Well, this is a rezone application, this as you stated.
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I could, I would like to speak to the rezoning aspect of it, and, uh, you know, when I look at this, it, it, quite frankly, is perfect transitioning off of a major arterial street that is 57th Street and at the corner of Bonson 2, which is a high-traffic street. And, uh, you know, I really commend the applicant on that. I, I mean, you look at it, we're off of 57th here, we're going from live-work, then we're going into three apartment, or three-story apartment into two-story apartment, and then we've got townhomes, and I think it's important to look to the south of those townhomes, they're single-family residential. That's exactly what Shape Place is for, uh, and I, and I think they did a good job with that transition, so I'll be voting in favor.
Okay. Thank you. Other discussion?
Mr. Chair, um, as you, uh, stated earlier, uh, it's preliminary, and I would hazard to guess of, you know, based on Commissioner Lukey's comment, I think the developer liked the initial plan better too, 'cause there was more building and less street. You can do more with the buildings than the street. I would imagine, because it's preliminary, they're gonna continue to put the brain matter to this and come up with, uh, with a plan that, that works, but to echo Commissioner Nyberg's comments, the transition, transitions are quite nice between 57th Street, uh, to the existing, uh, twin homes to the south today, so I'll be in favor of this one.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I should probably say that I agree with that a hundred percent, so.
Okay. Other discussions? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of item 5A approval signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no.
Yeah.
Thank you, John. We heard your yes. I have to remember to pause a little bit longer between those. Thank you. Motion carries.
Item 5B, petition CU 011830 2020, conditional use permit for an on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment within 500 feet of a sensitive land use located at 900 South Marion Road.
Uh, the applicant here is Reynolds Construction Management Service, Services. This is the existing Woody's Bar. Uh, they're just looking to expand the existing, uh, casino within the interior of the bar. Um, just, excuse me, just to get some more, uh, video lottery machines. Uh, the proposed on-sale alcohol meets a criteria of the comprehensive plan. This is an The proposed on-sale alcohol meets the criteria of the comprehensive plan, this is an existing arterial corridor Marion, Marion Road, and current operations already include that casino in there. Appropriate buffers and setbacks were implemented when this building was initially constructed, and parking is onsite and a security ma, security, excuse me, management plan has been submitted and approved by the police department. Because the applicant has provided clarity on the proposed use nature and extent of the work proposed, staff does recommend approval of this conditional use permit. And the applicant is not in attendance tonight, we did not receive any calls from neighbors or anybody opposed to it, so we did have the applicant just stay home for, obviously, for protection with COVID, so.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Any questions from the commission?
Say, Jason, sorry to put you on the spot, but I know we didn't have an informational on this. I assume no recent issues with this current establishment that we're aware of?
Resend issues?
Any recent issues with the, with, with the use?
No, no, we have not heard any recent issues or anything with their alcohol licensing. It's really, has to do with that amendment that was kind of passed by the city council four or five months ago that allowed, kind of took away the way to have one bartender be able to go between two essentially casinos, so we've been seeing this a lot where they're trying just, it's essentially trying to get more machines in there, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Jason. Said the applicant is not here tonight, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this item number 5B? Seeing none?
I'll make a motion for approval, Lukey.
Second, Johnson.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this item. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Item 5C, petition CU 0118472020, conditional use permit for an on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment within 500 feet of a sensitive land use located at 1029 North Minnesota Avenue.
The applicant here is Dave Grevelos, this is located in the existing shopping cart on North Minnesota Avenue. The applicant is proposing to add on-sale alcohol there to add additional video, or to add, excuse me, some video lottery terminals. This is their security management plan that's been submitted to the police department and approved. The proposed on-sale alcohol request meets the criteria of the comprehensive plan, this is an existing arterial corridor with commercial uses, I believe there is a casino already in this existing strip center. The existing multi-tenant building already is an existing convenience store where they're just adding, they're not doing any additions. Property and buffer is in place due to the existing uses, parking is onsite, and as I had indicated, the security management plan has been approved by the police department. Because the applicant has provided clarity on the proposed use nature and extent of the work proposed, staff does recommend approval of this conditional use permit, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions from the commission? Hearing none. Thank you, Jason. Is the applicant here for this one? What's that? Is the applicant here or on the phone?
Sorry about that. No, we did not receive any calls against, or in opposition of this specific case, so the applicant did stay home tonight, so sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this item 5C? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public testimony and entertain a commission action.
Mr. Chair, move to approve item 5C.
Second, Lukey.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item number 5C. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'll just say I have no concerns about this conditional use permit here, it seems a very appropriate use for this property, Minnesota Avenue, and I know there's a lot of other video lottery terminals nearby, so.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Item 5D, petition CU 0119802020, conditional use permit to allow a car wash within 250 feet of a DD form located at 1500 South Minnesota Avenue.
The applicant here is Brian Slama with Silver Star Car Wash, the owner is JBB Ventures LLC. The applicant is proposing to convert the old Vern ID car dealership here on Minnesota Avenue to a, into a Silver Star Car Wash. Essentially, the west portion of this building, as you can kind of see on here, adjacent to Minnesota Avenue will be the car wash portion, and then the east portion, the longer, skinnier part, and all, in the whole north-south part, that will be their actual corporate headquarters and training center for all of their other car washes and their employees. So they've done kind of a good job of actually keeping the car wash adjacent to Minnesota Avenue, which is something that, you know, we're looking for, because obviously we have lots of houses that back up to these commercial uses on Minnesota Avenue. As we know, South Minnesota Avenue is identified as a limited access arterial street. The applicant did hold that neighborhood meeting virtually again with the neighbors there, we did have some good feedback, and we've had some continued feedback from some of the neighbors adjacent to this car wash. Some of the things that they have asked for that I think are very reasonable for the applicant to do, and actually, I would like to add those as conditions if you guys would do that. One of them is the existing, there's an existing screen fence there, however, it's kind of in disrepair. If you've been out there, there's some columns that kind of look nice, but the actual wood pieces between them are in disrepair, so the applicant's fine, and the neighborhood did want that to be replaced, which seems very logical, so to be able to add that, they need to replace or replace the existing fence with a minimum of a six-foot-high screen fence, I think should be added. One of the other things that they were concerned about, which makes complete sense, is you can see that the applicant's showing vacuums adjacent to South Minnesota Avenue, and they're roughly about 53 feet from that east property line. There was just some concerns if, for some reason, you get down the line and it made more sense for electrical reasons to push those along the east, obviously, we didn't want those vacuums adjacent to the residential, so the other conditions, condition that I was going to propose to add in and was brought up by the neighborhood was to require a minimum of 45-foot setback from that east property line to the start of the vacuums, and that would just ensure that, that those vacuums are placed against Minnesota Avenue, which the applicant has proposed they were doing, and is, now we'll have to do it for sure, but we didn't have any doubt on that. The other aspect they brought up was some landscaping, which I think is also a great idea. The applicant, Silver Star Car Wash, has indicated that they are more than willing to put some landscaping trees where they can. Their concern with putting a condition on the number or where they're located is there is quite a bit of utility easements and things back there, lots of utilities, so they're concerned on where they can get them and where they can't. So that wasn't something I was comfortable with asking you guys to put on as a condition, the neighborhood may have a number they want to put in there, but the applicant has indicated that, that they are more than willing to put trees and want to be good neighbors anywhere they can get along that, that specific east property line. The proposed zoning, or proposed car wash does meet the comprehensive plan, this is an existing commercial corridor, as we know, with lots of uses surrounding South Minnesota Avenue. They're not looking at modifying the outside of the building besides the vacuums, most of the stuff's all interior, and I guess there is actually a small car wash that Vern ID already had there as part of their, you know, dealership. Further, the car wash and vacuums will be located again, adjacent to South Minnesota Avenue away from those single-family uses. And finally, as I indicated, the applicant is, is looking to replace that screen fence and then provide some landscaping to hopefully do the best job they can to, a buffer to those existing single-family homes to the east. Because the applicant has provided clarity on the proposed use nature and extent of the work proposed, staff does recommend approval with the following conditions to be added, that a minimum of a six-foot-high screen fence along that east property line, if they replace the one that's there, the panels, or if they completely start from scratch, but it'd have to be a six-foot-high screen fence. And then the vacuums, minimum of a 45-foot setback from the east property line to the start of the vacuum bays. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the commission?
Got a question for you, Jason. Say, it's a little tough to tell on this diagram here where the existing wood fence runs, I see we got it kind of pointed to directly east of the building, but a little more concerned about the vacuum bays, quite frankly, than the building itself. Does that fence run along the entire eastern property line all the way further south there?
Yep, I believe it runs all the way down to 25th Street, I'll have the applicant confirm that for sure.
Okay, yeah.
It kind of runs not quite on the property line in certain areas, but it does run adjacent to the park, and essentially screening the parking lot all the way around, so.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair, Jason, I just wanted to clarify, the last condition you weren't comfortable putting on there just because of the placement of landscaping could be touch-and-go based on easements, is that accurate?
Yeah, yeah, just that number, I mean, it, you know, say we put a condition that there need 12 trees or whatever the case may be, and for some reason, they can only get 10 on, on there because of easements and things, so it wasn't something I was comfortable, myself as a staff, staff recommending that for the applicant. As I indicated to the neighborhood, please, if you want to request that, you absolutely can, and then the planning commission can either approve or deny any conditions, even the ones I've suggested, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Is the applicant here this evening? Come forward, state your name and address for the record, please. And your address?
7905 East Oakmont Place, Sioux Falls, South Dakota.
Okay, you have anything else to add to Jason's report?
I think Jason did a great job by explaining what, what our purpose is of the property. You know, as we've grown over the last couple of years, you know, we've found that we need a really good facility to kind of hold our, you know, our train, our training, you know, our corporate staff, our maintenance department, all that kind of stuff. This, yeah, this property kind of accomplishes all that, so that's, that's pretty much it, so.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Slava, the conditions that staff has recommended, the two that he cited are good for you?
We're all, we're, excuse me, we are, we're okay, we've been working with the, excuse me, the, the residents, you know, we've had the Zoom meetings with them and have really kind of gotten, gotten good feedback, and we're all support to improve the neighborhood and make, make the improvements that we need.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this item?
There's several here.
Okay, come on up, whatever order you want. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Jason Matts, and I live on 1500 South Dakota Avenue, it's that corner house right adjacent, I've been there about 10 years. My, my concern is like on this diagram, and it was never really answered when I called in, is it showing that there's an exit, two exits on 23rd Street there, right out there? To me, my kids are there, since I've moved in for 10 years, we've had a turnover of a lot of young families in there, and my concern is for that, we'd increase traffic considerably by having that entrances or those exits, however you want to put it, on that 23rd Street. I'd like to see those shut down so everything's coming in off on Minnesota Avenue, in and out of Minnesota Avenue, because like what he said, and the application said an arterial roadway, the 23rd Street's not an arterial roadway. When we've had Vern ID there this past April, two weeks ago was the first time I was able to get my road cleaned and, and snow removal totally since Vern ID's out, because the other concern I had, and it's not noted anywhere on there, is for employee parking. Is that going to be onsite or is that going to be in streets? Because if it's in streets, then, I mean, I never had my street cleaned, like I said. It's been, it's been dirty there, the fa, the staff that was there, they were very respective of parking on that street. My concern is, and I've talked to him, I guess he's talking to different people than me, I did, and talked to a couple of neighbors, and they're very concerned about that. The other concern I have is if you do keep that 23rd open, then they're going to go on Dakota Avenue, and that's going to increase the traffic quite considerably. Two years ago, when Minnesota Avenue was closed, Dakota Avenue was a thoroughfare for that whole project, and cars are zooming down there left and right all the time on Dakota. I've got an 11-year-old, I got a seven-year-old, and I've got a couple neighbor kids that are just learning how to walk, and I'd have very much heartburn on that traffic flow there. The other thing that wasn't, and since we've been all quarantined and working from home, is that the car wash that he was talking about, I never realized how loud that was until I was sitting with my neighbor on his deck, and with just one, and that's not even commercial-grade, it's loud. And for me, to, to me, I mean, to come home and have to listen to a commercial car wash from 5:00 till 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock or whatever would be quite a big concern to me, because as not has, has not been stated is we're in the Hayes District, the historic district, that's right adjacent to that, and everyone's buying into the neighborhood because of the McKenna name and the Hayes Historic District. And since I've been there, all those houses that are on the backside where that fence are, it went from rental to homeowner now, and our neighborhood has gotten substantially younger. And, and to me, for that, for us to be able to have this kind of a top, I mean, the houses were there before this proposal was, and I mean, like you mentioned as Realtor and things like that, would you really want to buy a house or want to try to sell a house when you got a commercial car wash right behind you in there? Like I talked to one couple today, you know, they, they wouldn't, wouldn't have even thought of it if, if you had that on your backyard or in the neighborhood. And I've talked to everyone around me on there, and they're just not in favor of this. I don't, there's a lot of concerns in the plan, and I would not be comfortable with it, like I said, that 23rd Street, that'd have to be cut down, it come in on Minnesota, exit on it Minnesota. The other issue I have is with the water flow and things like that, if it comes down, if you don't close the 23rd, it's hard enough getting that type, that street cleaned in the winter and things like that. The other issue that we have is on 23rd and on Dakota right there, there's a stop sign and that stuff, our people that live in the neighborhood are on that stop sign all the time, we're averaging at least probably two to three accidents there a year in that, and some of them have not been very pleasant to deal with, some serious injuries has been Like I, I said, I mean, in there, I mean, staff recommendations, I find it funny that, you know, he works with the person, but he didn't really take into the consideration for the neighbors. I, I don't think, you know, the parking, the staff hasn't been addressed, I don't think the traffic that's been generated has been addressed, and I don't think the noise level has been addressed, because I guess I would like to talk to you guys as landowners and homeowners, would you want this in your backyard? When you bought knowing that it was a car dealership, and now it's going to go into a commercial-sized car wash, because he didn't note it, note it either that all of his other properties are basically in a commercial area, they're not in anything residential. The one out there on 10th Street there by the Service First Credit Union, the one on 85th, the one by Sycamore and everything, this is a unique request. This isn't coming in building new, this is homes and families that are already being established, so thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the commissioners? I will note, though, that this is already a C2 zoning, so it is commercial right now, but I appreciate the comments. Is there anyone else from the audience who would like to speak to this item? Come forward, state your name and address for the record. Come all the way to the ribbon in front.
Right up here so you can hear me. I'm Jeff Mettoma, I live at 1511 South Dakota Avenue, and I'm directly behind this proposed car wash. I'm not necessarily opposed to it, I just would like some clarification, you know, it's odd to me, I, I guess I, I didn't realize there was a, a video neighborhood call before, so this is really, just hit me today, and I just did a little research. Just some clarification if I could before it gets approved, and one is the noise, and you know, the standard car wash, based on the research I've done through 2019, the blowers put out about 110 decibels, and I live 70 feet to my back door from where this is. Anything over 60 decibels could cause hearing damage long-term. So was there any study done as to what these car washes put out that they own? And if it's below that, you know, again, I'm, I'm not saying I'm against this, I would just like to know before it was approved if anybody thought of that, because that's, 70 feet is pretty darn close to blowers from a car wash, I don't know if you guys have gone through those before. So that's one concern. Second concern is, is the same as my neighbor, and that is, is there a way that they're going, and again, I just want to hear it, is there a way they're going to direct the traffic that mitigates or minimizes how much goes behind the building out on the 23rd Street? You know, if it's on Minnesota, you're right, this was already commercial, I had no problem, I bought the house knowing that it was commercial, but it was nice, the business was virtually closed at 5:00. So as a family, you can go out in your backyard and smoke a cigar, do whatever you're going to do or play with the kids, but if there's a car wash blowing at 110 decibels, I don't think you'll have, be able to use your backyard at all, none of those properties. And again, mine's 70 feet, my neighbors are probably even closer. And again, mine's seventy feet, my neighbors are probably even closer. So I guess I'd just like that answered if we could. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to this item? Come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Joel Wallner. I live at fifteen thirteen South Dakota Avenue, which is the property directly next door to the last speaker. He, my backyard, the property line is approximately twenty-five feet to the building. My concerns are, I have a very young son, he's two years old. We spend a lot of time in the backyard. Again, the noise, he's two. I feel like I won't even be able to play outside with him. The increased traffic level going on Dakota Avenue, that's a huge concern with a toddler, and I have a baby on the way. Again, the noise level, I work rotating shifts, so sleeping during the day, that's, I don't know how that's going to go. I understand that this was a commercial property, but it did not generate noise whatsoever. It was a car dealership. They have a car wash onsite, which I didn't hear until recently, just as the previous speaker, and it is not quiet. And it's not going to be nearly the noise level of the proposed plan. One specific concern I had as well, on the diagram, I'm not sure because it's an overlay, there is a giant, very large tree on the property, not my property, but the commercial property. That shades my backyard. I'm concerned if that will be cut down. I don't know any of that. And again, I had no idea about these virtual meetings. I didn't, this is, I just found out about this. Haven't really been informed. Just very concerned with traffic and noise level are really the, my main concerns, and then the tree and what will be done with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners? Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to this item?
Good evening. My name is Paul Cheddar, and I live at three-twenty West Twenty-Fifth, which is the other direction from the subject property. And I appreciate the applicant's and the staff's willingness to entertain the conditions that they've been, that have been proposed to you. Those are suggestions that myself and some of my neighbors put forth over the past week. I will say, it's nice to see as many neighbors here as we have, but there are a whole host of people in that neighborhood that live in homes that haven't turned over to young families yet. And the idea of having a Zoom meeting to someone who doesn't even have the internet in their home is completely foreign. And I appreciate the applicant's efforts to have some mechanism in place for a meeting, but I think we're missing some meaningful input from members of the community who, I would knock on my neighbor's door, and they would wave at me from the window because they're afraid to speak to their neighbors, let alone attend a meeting like this. And so I think that that should be given some due consideration in addition to some of the other issues that have been raised tonight as to whether or not this should be tabled for some additional information and allow some of those neighbors to have some input. One of the things I want to highlight is that the commercial building immediately to the right or to the south of the subject property was also purchased by the applicant. Currently, along that property line, that shows a small grass median before parking lot where the red line is, there's a fence there. The applicant, despite it not being depicted here or available in the information we received, is going to have that parking lot go all the way south to Twenty-Fifth Street. So the traffic concerns on Twenty-third Street, I don't want to minimize at all their concerns, but the traffic coming out of that car wash, if you notice in the middle of the screen, is being directed to the south. And anybody who wants to turn south onto Minnesota Avenue is going to be disincentivized to try to cross the traffic going north of Minnesota Avenue, and they're going to go to Twenty-Fifth Street. And from the stop sign at Twenty-Fifth and Dakota, there are sixteen children, fifteen and under within a block and a half, ten children, six and under within a block of that stop sign. So to funnel that kind of traffic, that direction into the neighborhood is going to create some significant hazards, particularly in the cold winter months when they're coming out of a car wash. They're still leaving moisture behind them, and you have a stop sign with young kids playing outside. It's going to be a potential safety hazard. So I think there needs to be some consideration on what we can do to slow that traffic. And to that end, I would ask the commission to consider adding a condition in which there is a speed bump or something to reduce speed going to Twenty-third Street and Twenty-Fifth Street, so that you don't have customers getting a clean car, feeling hot and jazzy, and thinking they've got a clear, a clear drive pulling on Twenty-Fifth Avenue and entering the neighborhood with that kind of speed. Obviously, concerns we have with traffic will bring to the city's attention after the fact, but I think the condition should be imposed to try to minimize and reduce speed of cars entering the neighborhood, given the number of children. And I also would like that, like to have the condition relative to the fence be clear that that fence should extend all the way south to Twenty-Fifth Street. The subject property ends as depicted, but the fence is in even worse disrepair as you get further south. So we'd like to be clear that that condition extends all the way south to Twenty-Fifth Street. And finally, with respect to the trees, this utility question is somewhat puzzling to me. The hours and time spent in site development, a simple two-on-one call to do a utility locate would tell them where the utility lines are and where trees can and can't be planted. So I would ask that as a condition that it's a specific number of trees, whether that's, I would advocate for twelve. Six-foot fence is great for the adjoining property, but those of us that are another half a block away or more would benefit more greatly from having trees of a greater height than the six-foot fence would allow. So I'd ask that you would have that condition, and I would ask for twelve trees. And I'm happy to have a mechanism in place where if there's an impossibility that we can come to an agreement as a neighborhood, I think everyone's wanting to be reasonable of the, as I've told the developer, the applicant, of the universe of uses here, this is probably in the top quartile of things that we can make be acceptable with certain conditions, and so I appreciate their willingness to be open to that. Forty-five feet, I guess my primary concern is that the bay, the distance of those vacuums doesn't get too close. With respect to the noise issues raised, that's true with the car wash itself, but also with the vacuums. The applicant has a location near St. Michael's School that complies with the city's noise-sensitive zone requirements. And I would ask that an additional condition be placed that at this location, given the proximity to residential properties as well as the proximity to a historical neighborhood, that the city add as a condition that it comply with the noise-sensitive zones so that we can preserve the tranquility of our neighborhood. And with that, I appreciate your consideration of the proposed conditions and appreciate, again, the applicant and the city's willingness to entertain comments from the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to this one?
Carter Roberts with Norman Engineering. I can answer any other questions you might have, but I'll hit on a couple of them. That first access to the west on Twenty-third, it will be used more as like a bypass lane like you see on these other car washes. So if a car comes in and they forgot their wallet or something, they can head out that way instead of clogging up the whole lane. To the employee parking, all the parking along the east side of the property will be employee parking. That will not be vacuum bays or anything. It will be reserved for employee parking and those getting trained and that sort of thing. And then as far as the tree comment, the issue that we were having with planting so many trees is there's an overhead power line there. So we can plant however many trees we want, and that, I mean, we could. But my concern with that is that as, as they grow and get taller, the utility company won't want these interfering with their lines, so they'll just top them off. And you can see that all over town. Twenty-six and Marion is a good example where those trees are just cut off at the top, so it doesn't promote further growth. So we're looking at spots where we can plant these in a strategic spot where it can help screen and help with the noise and all that coming out of the car wash, so. If Brian wants to touch on some of the other comments?
Brian? Yes, so some of these points on Twenty-third Street, back there on that second, that second entrance, that's an existing entrance.
Step forward just a bit, if you would. Thank you.
Our intent would be that that would be more focused for our maintenance that are out in the field going to and from that. That's going to be, and that, and in addition to that, that's where the additional employee parking will be to enter the office area and everything. To Carter's point, you know, there is, there's just a really, it's about a three-foot, about a three-foot area from the fence to the curb back there. And so we just haven't gotten to a point where we can, you know, know what tree will best fit in that area. So to Paul's point, we're more than willing to work with the neighbors as to what works best in that, but we are totally open to ideas in planning that, so.
Then we heard a comment, I believe, about noise later and that kind of thing. Do you have any intent on kind of hours that maybe we could put a condition on if there's concern about that?
Sure. We are open at eight o'clock, and we close at seven. During the, during the wintertime, or excuse me, during the summertime, we're open till eight o'clock. So, you know, that's, those would be the standard hours that we would operate that facility.
Okay, and then we heard some comments about noise and that being excessive. If you could speak to that, do you have any knowledge of?
Absolutely. We ended up going through quite a bit of research on our Twenty-six and Marion location as that sits in that school zone, and so we were, we were working with the city as to the proper noise levels that we needed to abide by. And actually, when you have, you know, a business in that, in that type of zone, you're held to, you know, lower standards of just noise that's coming off the car, excuse me, coming out of the business, and we were, you know, we were more than complying, I guess you'd say, with those levels that the city required, so.
So it sounds like you'd be willing if we had a condition that was regarding being in a noise-sensitive zone essentially here as well?
It's hard to understand, like, what level that would necessarily mean and what decimal levels, because when you're dealing with decimal level readings, they're all gauged on, you know, a certain height of reading and certain distance away from that noise level and the property line. So when you get to that, when you get into that territory, it can get very particular. So it's hard to say that, you know, based off of where we're at, you know, in the elevations that are happening in the, on the property, you know, how that would all unfold. So, but I can tell you, you know, like I said, our vacuum systems, you know, they have a big muffler on there, on top of the producer, and that, that muffler ends up, you know, taking out most of the vacuum noise. All the individual vacuum drops, they do not have their own producer, so it's only one area where that noise would be generated from. And then, like I said, the greatest noise would come from the dryers, and the dryers turn out, they're held inside at the exit of the car wash. But like I said, you know, the dryers that if you measure the distance from where they are to where the property line would be, it would be hard to measure the true decimal level of those dryers because of, you know, the traffic that you're getting on Minnesota. And so, you know, you'd have a really mixed reading, I would say, you know, based off of, you know, having that requirement. But our dryers at the latest at the summertime would be shut down at eight o'clock.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
Mr. Chair, just to expand on that noise element a little bit. So with some of the different facilities, and some of them you've built from scratch, what different, you know, techniques, what different materials have you experimented with or used to mitigate noise coming out of those bays? Even with the doors open, I mean, there's got to be things that absorb the noise inside the building to a large degree?
Dryers, I could say to this, you know, all our facilities inside the car wash are built with the same equipment and with the same setup. And what's nice with where the dryers sit, you know, that all the motors in the producer that generate that, that, you know, the air, sit above, they sit above the, basically the door, exit door. And so a lot of that kind of gets already bounced back into the car wash. It's really just that noise, you know, that wind noise that you're getting, you know, that gets on the car that comes out. Now, there is some, you know, motor noise, but it's, it's very, you know, cut down because they sit higher up in, into the tunnel of the car wash.
Mr. Chair, so Brian, so what I heard was that hours of operation, eight AM to eight PM in the sun, in the summertime? So if there's a restriction of time of when, you know, business could be done, would you be open to that?
Restrict, absolutely. I mean, with that point, you know, we've held those hours, you know, for eight years now, almost nine. And so, you know, we don't plan on extending those hours out to, you know, out any further. When the sun goes down, yeah, people will wash their cars. When the sun's up, you know, that's when they wash the cars.
And then there was one gentleman that was asking what side of the building the car wash would be on? I'm guessing maybe on the, it's on the Minnesota side?
Correct. So when we were looking at this, we kind of understood, you know, that we needed some type of buffer, you know, and we want to be cognizant of, you know, the residents back there. And so we focused the design efforts on, you know, putting, you know, centralizing the traffic towards, you know, Minnesota, stacking along Minnesota, and then having an exit, you know, on the Minnesota side and making that convenient for the people as they leave to, you know, go on their way either north or south. And so going back to that Twenty-third Street exit, that would be, that would be, that would not, that would not be, said, you know, that would not be intended basically for any customers or it's mostly just this personnel that would be coming in and out.
Okay, so I'm guessing it's probably, you're having the car wash, and then your, your office is on the east side of the building?
That's correct, yeah.
And then basically your staff is going to be parking on the east side of that building, which would be like your maintenance staff, your corporate staff, manager, training, that type of stuff?
Correct, yeah. And so, and everything that's, you know, that we, that we see the high traffic at our facilities, you know, on those peak days, you know, they fall, they fall, you know, closer, as close as we could get them onto that, you know, Minnesota side.
And I know there's, I think it was Joel that basically was asking about a tree. I don't know if any impact to that tree or anything just addresses concern?
So there's a tree in the back where, you know, essentially the power comes in to feed the building. And tree is fairly, fairly large, and it kind of branches through that power line. And so, you know, depending on the stage of where they're at and what the, you know, power company would require us to do, you know, that's something that might have to be taken out. But that wouldn't be something that we would have control in. It would be more or less focused in on, hey, you guys, your tree's growing into our power lines, you have to do something about it. So that's where that would be.
And then they were talking, you know, the property to the south that I'm, maybe you're purchasing, maybe you're not. It's not part of this, what we're talking about tonight, but just to talk on that, would you, if you are purchasing that property, would you continue that fence all the way down to Twenty, Twenty-Fifth Street for them?
That has been kind of, that has been our intent through, you know, this entire conversation. And, you know, sometimes it, that's not quite clearly depicted since we're isolating just, you know, the first part of that, of that property. But when we would replace, you know, that existing fence, we would continue it all the way down to that Twenty-Fifth Street.
And then another thing that they had brought up is maybe some speed bumps onto Twenty-third Street and Twenty-Fifth Street. Would that be something to, you know, just kind of slow down that traffic as they're coming out onto those two streets?
To Paul's point, it's great, you know, it's a good idea. Whether it's, whether we need it in there as a condition, you know, it's, I could say that it, it wouldn't be necessary only to the fact that we do that already at all of our sites. So in the vacuum areas, we have the speed bumps, where there's, you know, longer stretches of parking lot where people can accelerate, we put speed bumps on there. What's, you know, in the wintertime, you know, they're removable speed bumps. That allows us to plow and, you know, do those things. But as soon as it's, it's clear, we put those speed bumps back.
Just to, I mean, would you be open to it if, just to make them happy and okay with it? I think their biggest concern is basically just people whipping around there and coming out, which would probably be staff, but.
The clarity of where those speed bumps would be, you know, located, you know, it would, I'm not sure where he had, you know, where he was speci- it would, I'm not sure, uh, where he had, you know, where he was specifically requesting those. Um, and so if, if it's on that, you know, if it's closer to the Minnesota side, um, or is it closer to, you know, um, in, closer into the neighborhood, I'm not quite sure.
Okay.
But this facility would be, you know, ran the same way with the same, you know, um, things that we use to control traffic, you know? So speed bumps are, you know, they are required, um, and that's why we put them in there. Um, but, you know, based off of this, on that, you know, on that east side, that's, it's just gonna be, you know, our staff members going in and out. It's not gonna be, you know, commercial people zooming, zooming back there. Um, and I've been back there, um, to walk the fence line, and, you know, there, there are cars, uh, it's pretty narrow back there, and, um, it's people, it would be very hard to, you know, be comfortable speeding down that. But if we find it necessary that we have to control that, uh, we will put the speed bumps, you know, we'll put the speed bumps in because obviously, you know, safety is our number one concern, uh, with sites, and, you know, it's up to us to control that. And, you know, in the event that we see an area where that gets exposed, um, then we, we go to mitigate it.
Yep, and I'll echo, we, I mean, our office is right by one of your locations in the south, and I'm trying to just even remember any noise coming from it. Um, and, you know, I've never seen or heard of a problem of any, we've got three hundred agents in our office, I've never heard anything from anybody that it's been a problem, so. Uh, but one thing, I do have a question, what's the decimal level typically of the vacuums, would you say?
Uh, like I said, it, it all depends on where, what level, uh, that you read it from, you know? If you're reading from the property line, you know, um, it all determines on, on how, how close you are and, you know, how high that range is. You know, um, you know, to the point of the gentleman, um, that brought that up, you know, that could be, you know, that's hard to say, is, that could be read when the, you know, when the decimal meter is, you know, right at the, right at the motor, um, or is, it could be read when it's five feet from the motor. You know, when we went through our twenty-sixth street, um, um, build, and we were working with the, the city on, uh, noises, noise controls, um, you know, it was, you had to read, I think it was about, I think it was almost seventy decimals, um, so far past, um, where the property line was. So, um, you know, forgive for not knowing the details on the setbacks on that, we, Carter might, um, can get you something, but, and he's been doing the research, we've been, but for the most part, like I said, you know, if you look at where the noise level's gonna be amplified from, um, uh, it's pretty far away from where those fences are. And not only in addition to, you know, where that noise is gonna be, you're gonna have trees, you're gonna have the fence, you know? If we need to put, you know, uh, some type of, uh, you know, hedge to where we, where we have those skinnier areas to mitigate that, we don't have a problem with that at all. Um, but when you, when you get the most noise is when the car is coming out of the tunnel, where that door opens up right at the last moment, and, uh, then as soon as the car passes, you know, that door closes. Um, and so to think that it's just gonna be a constant, you know, screaming, that's, you know, that's not the case, um, to where you have intermittent people coming through, um, all times of the day. And so it's not a, you know, it's not a constant, um, sound that would, would be coming from, you know, the wash there. So it's, you know, I know Carter's working with, uh, different ideas that what trees will work best there, uh, what, uh, you know, both for, you know, sound density will be something that we look at in the trees that we select there. Um, you know, how quickly will they grow, how wide, you know, will they span, you know? So there's a lot that goes into, um, trying to find the right, uh, the right items to place back there. And we'll go through that process and understanding the, that, you know, the, the, the residents have, you know, young families and babies, you know, a father of three and, and can completely relate to that. And so, you know, I have their interest, you know, that we will, uh, that we will do everything that we can to properly improve that, that fence line and, and make it, you know, do it the right way.
Yep, I appreciate it. And I was just thinking, as you said, something, um, that basically where our office is at, I mean, not hearing anything, and we've got concrete asphalt road buildings that would echo off each other, so honestly, to, just thinking about it, there's really no sound that I hear. So if you can mitigate some of that stuff, I think that would probably help, so, thank you.
Absolutely, we would definitely, you know, we will look towards doing that. Um, it's just a matter of, you know, like I said before, what we can, what we can put in there that will best fit. I think there's some trees in there that, you know, are, have been planted too close to the fence and, you know, has pushed the fence over, uh, because of how, you know, uh, how big they've grown. So, um, it's, it's something that is gonna be, you know, delicate with understanding when and where. If we can't plant the trees, um, you know, becau- because there may or may not be utility lines there, uh, then we'll look, you know, it's not like we're just gonna say, yes, we didn't get out, we got out of it because there's a utility line there. You know, we'll look to give, build a higher fence if we can, we'll look to, you know, put a hedge there, you know, we'll put something there to replace it, you know? Um, and so we're, you know, we're willing to work with the residents, um, you know, with them and their backyards in mind, and, uh, you know, that, you know, and we will look forward to it because I understand what are common problems.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, are there any other commissioner questions? Okay, thank you very much. I don't think we've closed the, uh, public testimony. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to this that hasn't already spoken? Come on up, or, okay?
Hi, my name is Sue Crell, and I have two addresses because I have a business on the southeast corner of Twenty-Fifth and Minnesota, and I've been there for thirty years. And I have a house that I live at right next to it, at four oh seven West Twenty-Fifth Street. Um, a point that I want to make before I forget it, because I haven't written it down, is that houses are made differently than businesses. So the sound that you're gonna hear in a business is gonna be different than a house that has different structures. A commercial building is made completely differently with better walls, better windows, better insulation than most of those houses that are in the hundred-year-old marks, okay? So I appreciate that comment, but you also have to look at the structures that are around there. I don't hear near as much inside my office building as I do inside my house. So there's two different structures we're talking about, just so we don't forget that. Um, the other thing before I forget, because I didn't, I forgot my pen, um, what size are those trees gonna be when they're planted? Are they gonna be small? Because we, we discussed, how are they gonna grow? How big are they gonna get? I think that we need to plant some established trees in order to truly address that noise issue. If you're gonna plant a, you know, a sapling, that's really, that's a, that's an effort, but it's really not a solution. So I think we need to look at what size those trees are, not just how many, and also consider the fact that it does matter what kind of tree it is, because in the wintertime, there are no leaves on a tree, and sound travels faster through cold air than it does warm, and that may be an issue in the wintertime, all right? Um, in the thirty years that I have owned my business, my building has been hit twice, has been involved in accidents twice, and I, I want that to come into play with that whole strip on Minnesota Avenue. Not that it's necessarily the car wash's issue, but it is a city issue, because you're gonna have more accidents on Minnesota. I'm not thrilled with the fact that there could be water coming out of that parking lot. I'm a physical therapist, I see people who don't have necessarily good cervical spine motion to look both ways. When you come out onto the Twenty-Fifth Street side from Minnesota, it's wide, and then it narrows significantly at that exit to a very narrow street. We already deal with overflow traffic of employees and patrons from the restaurant colonies that block that street to the point that you're lucky if you can get one car down there. I had to petition the city when we had construction and traffic was diverted down Twenty-Fifth Street to put a stop sign in after several accidents and almost seeing a child get killed. So it took that much to get a stop sign at that intersection. And I've been there, I've seen the changes in traffic, and I know what, what is coming. Um, I know it's a commercial zone, obviously I'm a commercial owner, but I've, I've tried to adapt to that. I also get a significant amount, because I have two entrances as well, of drive-through people. They come in and they turn around, and that's what I see happening. They're gonna come out, they're not gonna be able to get out one way or the other, they're gonna come through my parking lot and then hit the intersection, and that runs the risk of them hitting someone that may be in a wheelchair, a walker, crutches, may not be moving as quickly, okay? We all know cell phones, everything else. You've been through the car wash, you're done washing, you're feeling good, you're on your phone calling your buddy, what's gonna happen next? We've had, um, multiple serious accidents that have taken lives within that block. Okay, and I just, I just am bringing those to everybody's attention, traffic does travel fast, okay? Um, and the lighting issue. I don't necessarily want light shining in my house at eight o'clock at night, um, when it's getting darker out. Are the lights gonna be on overnight? Are they not gonna be? What direction are they, um, gonna flow? And then the noise level, I think that there is a way to measure those decibels, and I think it needs to be controlled at the source, because if there's so many variables that they're unable to give us a direct answer about what that noise level is be, is gonna be, depending on terrain, it's flat. There's no hills there, okay? It's a flat spread of land. Take that decibel reading at the source and go from there with making it, uh, uh, a, a sensitive zone. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to speak to this item?
Hi, I'm Danny Cruz, I live at four hundred West Twenty-Fifth Street, so I'm on the corner, just immediately to the south here. Um, I know that you did a nice job of talking through and explaining some of the things that concerns we raised and things they would like to do, so, well, we can make the fence bigger if we need to, we can plant the trees if we need to. Um, but without those conditions being set in place and, and written down and saying, well, we need these conditions met, it's just going on the word. So I do think, you know, we're, we're trying to establish a working relationship, but unless we can get these conditions written down, what assurance, I guess, for me as a homeowner about extending that fence all the way down? Because my, you know, that parking lot has now become the Silver Star parking lot as they knock down the fence that's there and divert traffic to the south, what assurances do we have as homeowners that the things he talked about, um, wanting to do and wanting to work with us, what assurances do we have that those get met for us? So that would be my only question.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to this item? Okay, come forward, state your-
State your name and address for the record, please. I'm Joe Alec, I live at three twenty-three, or three twenty West Twenty-third, kitty-corner from Project. I've been there forty-seven years, and, uh, we, Vern I D was trying to tear down all the houses that these people bought a few years ago, and wanted to put a, a whole lot full of cars. We turned that down. And, uh, so he's decided to sell all the houses along twenty, along Dakota Avenue. And everything was going hunky-dory pretty much, except the employees parked on Twenty-third Street. Consequently, the snow removal didn't get done, uh, streets didn't get cleaned, and, uh, and they were done at five o'clock, which is fine, but Sioux Falls does not clean streets after five o'clock. So, I went out to Walmart on Eighty-Fifth Street to see the, the noise coming out of their function out there. I was across the street in the Walmart parking lot, I could hear it for a block away, because the, the blowers are on the other side of the, of the trail, or whatever that building is. And so I could hear them for a block away. Now, can you imagine what's gonna be like with the residential area that's right alongside the, uh, car wash itself? How many people do they have at the corporate, and how many employees are they gonna have to park in that, that backside? I don't know. But normally, they will park on Twenty-third Street if it's convenient. Opening hours are till eight o'clock, I don't wanna hear car washes at eight o'clock at night. When you buy a house, usually it's quiet enjoyment. Am I not right? Buy a house, you have the right to quiet enjoyment. And at eight o'clock, if you're ready to go to bed, that's the only quiet enjoyment you're gonna get if you're gonna get a bit of car wash. So, uh, I, I don't, I don't know. But on the back of the agenda, it says action, process. Commissioners will make a motion for approval, denial, or deferral. And I ask you to deny. I'd appreciate it for the residents of the area, and there could be, uh, different functions for that building to accommodate the neighborhood, and there's a lot of houses that have been bought, there's dogs running all over the place, walking the dogs, and like he said, there's a lot of new people there with kids and grownups, so I'm asking you for your opinion. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to this one that hasn't already been up? Come on forward, state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Mitchell Irons, uh, currently live at the Willa Run Apartments, but, uh, we're gonna be moving into sixteen oh four South Dakota Avenue, which is just on the east side there. Um, my concern, uh, first thing would be, this is the historic district. When I think of McKenna Park, I don't think Midwest Silver Star headquarters, um, they've got seven locations in Sioux Falls. I just did the, uh, looked on Google Maps, the location that's next to Costco is five minutes away from here. There's another car wash at the BP on Thirty-third and Minnesota. Um, I also, uh, in high school, I used to work for Jimmy John's as a delivery driver. I can tell you that, uh, Dakota is just a nightmare, there's parking on both sides of the street, many times only one car can fit through, all the delivery drivers that go, that, uh, go to Jimmy John's, there's dominos down the street, cars fly by there, the increased traffic would not be fun, um, and then, yeah, the noise level would be the other thing I wanna say, um, when I, yeah, when I come home, I want peace and quiet, I wanna be able to open up my windows. I don't wanna hear, uh, vacuum bays or the car wash until eight o'clock at night, that's just, that's not what I think of when I think of the historic district of McKenna Park, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions from the commissioners? Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak to this item?
Hi, I'm Ryan Tisdale, I work for Van Busker Companies, and I represent, uh, JBB Ventures, The Cellar, who is a, one of the ownership groups of Vern I D Motor Cars. When Silver Star came to us, we were very excited, we've done past deals with them, and our experience with Silver Star has been, they've been very upstanding, done everything they said. Um, our experience, they haven't been a group that does the bare minimum, they, you know, do it right, and they don't just talk the talk, they, they back up what they promise. Um, I do commend them and the city planning staff, um, considering kind of the limitations we've had the last couple of months in terms of communication and the ability to have in, in-person meetings. They really went, um, to all extents possible to communicate with the neighbors, providing, you know, direct cell phone numbers for questions, email addresses, setting up online meetings and coordinating that, not just with the neighbors, but having planning staff in each of those, um, online face-to-face meetings. So, I mean, they, I was pretty impressed with the extent they went to, because I feel like there are some people, as they apply for conditional use permits, they kind of do the bare minimum, and in my experience here, Silver Star did as much as they could to try to communicate with, with the neighbors behind here. And this, you know, as you know, this problem isn't necessarily unique to this property, you're dealing with, you know, a major arterial street down the center of the city, one of the original streets of the city, um, you know, you don't- You know, you don't have quite the buffers that you would under shape places in some of these brand-new developments where you can buffer down from, you know, commercial into other things. You know, Minnesota Avenue, it, it's a state highway. You know, it's the number-one north-south arterial in the, in the city. So, you know, to see a car wash on a major street like that is not uncommon. And, you know, like the last gentleman said, there are several other car washes on Minnesota Avenue next to single-family homes. And, you know, the world doesn't, the world doesn't end. They seem to be fine. Silver Star did share with me that one of the, one of the people who owns one of the houses directly to the east of where the vacuum bays are shown actually went and did kind of an in-person sound test at another Silver Star location at the distance their house would be. And they couldn't even hear the vacuums at that distance. So, like, well, you know, glad to see neighbors doing that. And, you know, some of the neighbors are saying, you know, "We're not hearing the vacuums at that distance." In terms of traffic, I've had several meetings in this building over the last couple of years with Vernite. And I'd hate to call it a zoo, but on any given day, Vernite has about two hundred cars on this property, which I, I guess I can see why their employees park on the street or on Twenty-third Street. So from a traffic perspective, I would suspect that Silver Star's use would have a significantly lower impact than what Vernite has today. This is no exaggeration. More than a couple of times, I've shown up for a meeting with Vernite at this building, and there are zero parking spots on the property to park in. And, you know, I literally drive around the block and come back to, to find a parking spot. So I would suspect that Silver Star's level of traffic will be lower than what, than what Vernite has. And I really commend Silver Star in how, in how they've designed the site, you know, putting the car wash close to Minnesota Avenue, offices for, you know, really white-collar and professional jobs closest to the, the residential housing. They shared with me that their car wash will have sound buffers. The current car wash that Vernite has in there does not have any sound buffers. And, you know, I'm not a car wash expert, but I would speculate that, you know, knowing that Vernite's car wash has been there for quite some time, I'm guessing it's not as state-of-the-art as brand-new equipment that, that Silver Star would put in there. So from a sound perspective, you know, you have people working in offices there. I, I would, you know, suspect that there's, you know, the appropriate mitigation done. You know, I will share that I have clients that own property next to four of Silver Star's locations in Sioux Falls, and none of them have ever had an issue, never had an issue with cleanliness, never had an issue with noise. Silver Star, in my experience, you know, my office is next to one of them. There, it's a very... They, they do a good job. They're good operators, so I would expect nothing different at this location.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions from the commission?
I do have a question for Ryan. Ryan, I think this building's, what, been for sale for two years? Year and a half, two years?
It was actually under contract.
Okay.
Another auto dealership was gonna buy it for a used car dealership late last year. And then that deal ended up not going through. And then when Silver Star came along, I'm like, wow, what a great opportunity for them. And, and it's a great building. You know, this building was originally built as the Mercedes and BMW dealership in the, in the city. So it's, you know, built to those German standards. It's an extremely expensively-built building. So to see a, kind of a first-class group like Silver Star buy it seems to make a lot of sense.
And just looking at the building, I mean, there's only a couple of things that could go here in, you know, car wash or a car dealership. That's pretty much, I mean, I've looked at this property a lot.
Car dealership. And some of the neighbors, in their communication with the, with the buyer, you know, there was some, from some, really a sigh of relief that it's somebody coming in who, you know, are owner-operators. They're gonna be on-site every day. They're gonna keep it clean, take care of it. There was some fear from some of the neighbors that it would kind of become a rundown, dilapidated property depending on who ended up buying it and what their use would be.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to this item that hasn't already addressed the commission? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public testimony. Jason, I'd like to have you come up. We heard a couple of comments on that last round about size of trees required to be planted. I think the city has standards about that. The lights and their cutoff, extending off of sight. And I think the city has standards about that. And noise levels and whether or not there is such a thing as a noise-sensitive zone. If you could speak to those three items?
Sure. Minimum tree requirements for deciduous shade trees are two-inch caliber. Depending on if, with, with them indicating that there's power lines, it may go more of the ornamental style. So those are, I think, an inch and a half or inch and three-quarters minimum to start. The lighting, you're absolutely right. We have a section in our zoning orders for standards of outdoor lighting. It regulates the height of the fixtures, how much candlelight can be at the property line. You know, specifically on Minnesota Avenue, if you go up and down it, you know, one that I think of that we don't ever get complaints on, if you've ever gone through the Taco Bell drive-through, that backs right up to a single-family residential. The device is there. They have lights back there. I mean, they're all regulated by the outdoor lighting ordinance within the city. I don't think we've ever gotten a zoning complaint from anybody with light trespass or noise from those. So we do have a pretty good ordinance that addresses that stuff. And when we do get a complaint, we have a meter. We go out there and read it at night. And it has to be less than three-foot candlelights at the property line. And if it isn't, then they have to put fully cutoff shields and, and they have to do something with the, the actual lights. There's the noise-sensitive zones, that's probably a health department requirement. I'm not sure what that actually is for decibels. I'm assuming it's quite low if it's right by a school, if they have that for a commercial property. And as the applicant indicated, the same equipment that's over there will be in this specific, this specific car wash. And I think also it, it may help too with noise because you, you're not, on the other side of the north wall is not parking lot. It's actually another building, you know, another section. So that should help a little bit. I would assume the most noise is gonna be going south as you come out of there and not particularly east. Some of the traffic concerns, you know, those are existing accesses onto Twenty-third Street. The property to the south that they've also are the under contract to purchase if they're approved. You know, anytime that they had to re, they would redevelop that parcel or do improvements to it, they'd have to meet those buffer, buffer yard standards within the zoning ordinance. So there'd be a twenty-foot minimum setback fences, berms, landscaping along that. This one doesn't have to because they're really not doing anything to the exterior of the, of the building or replacing the parking lot and that stuff. So that lot will, in the future, will probably look a lot different and, and probably have some pretty significant landscaping on it. You know, some other traffic things, you know, we have to fight tooth and nail actually with engineering to even keep that access open on Minnesota Avenue. I mean, traffic standards now for them would be to close that access off and have all traffic going to Twenty-third and Twenty-Fifth Street because that's the safest way to do it. That's what the studies say is safe. I mean, that's why when you go down Minnesota Avenue and Forty-first Street, you see any new redevelopment, all those accesses are going away because that's the safest way to do it. That's the best traffic standards to utilize. So typically, we see this is people are gonna go the path of least resistance. I mean, you'll still get, I shake my head when people try and do it, but you'll still get a lot of people that'll try and turn left across Minnesota Avenue instead of going down to Tw- Twenty-Fifth Street possibly and going to Minnesota and then out. The only people that are probably gonna go to the east, in my opinion, are people that live there. I live over in that area on the other side of, south of McKenna Park. If I was coming to this car wash to utilize it, I would go east out of, on Twenty-Fifth Street to my house. Most other people are gonna be using Minnesota, i- in my opinion, or they're gonna go to Phillips and Dow. People take the path of least resistance. There's stop signs and lots of stops. You may take it once, and then you go the fastest way you can go, so. I think that was all the questions, if there's any more about...
I think so. Does anybody else have a question for...
Mr. Chair. Jason, are you, can you explain, I guess I never really thought about it this way, but utility easement versus two-on-one landscaping? Can you do anything you want inside a utility easement as long as you avoid the line? I don't know if that's...
Uh, well, there's different kinds of easements. Two-on-one's just gonna mark underground utilities, you know, cable, electrical and that. It sounds like more with them is they're running into the overhead power lines, which, as we've seen quite a bit on, on these areas where there are overhead power lines, I mean, a lot of times the companies just cut them off, cut these trees off, and they, they're not viable then. They, they don't, they don't hire a landscaper to come cut them off. They just cut them off. So I think that's really more of their concerns. If there's specific easements back there, sometimes they won't allow you to plant anything in those easements, even if you mark two-on-one. I know we have sanitary sewer easements where you can't plant trees. And there's just certain requirements. It's really all up to the utility companies. And I think that's part of what they're concerned about with putting an actual number on landscaping. I mean, I think it's a great idea for them to put existing landscape, or more landscaping back there. I just don't know how to regulate a number and where that would, would come in or, or placement of it because I just don't know how that's gonna look. And then one other point I wanted to make too is there's just so many uses that could, to go in this building without any approval. I mean, you could have a grocery store, you could have a restaurant, you could have a car dealership. There's just so much gas station. Not saying that they would go there, but there's a lot of higher-traffic generating uses that can go in here without, you know, without a conditional use. It's really just the noise and the car wash aspect of it, why they need to come in front of you. And I think they will have the adequate parking for their office structure there. And then they have, you know, people don't park after they come out of the car wash. They either go to the vacuums, vacuum, and then leave. So, I mean, they have space for what, twenty-some parking spaces? I doubt they have twenty, twenty to twenty-five people in the office plus the people working there. I mean, they run a pretty limited crew, you know, five people that run the car wash. So I don't see any problem with why they would have them park on the street at all. Car dealerships, we don't have minimum parking standards, so they can park their for-sale cars anywhere they want on the lot. So that's why they tell their employees, "Please park on the street." So, 'cause we have to have inventory for people to drive by, so.
Okay, any other questions for Jason?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, John.
Jason, you brought up two conditions you wanted to have added. And then subsequently, there was a lot of discussion about other factors, traffic calming, hours of operation, the decibel level. Again, more specific information with regards to landscaping. What is your recommendation with regards to those for our consideration?
Well, a- as I indicated, I absolutely think they should do some landscaping back there, anything that they can get in there. I just don't know what that number is. The noise or noise safety zone or whatever they call that, it's not really my expertise on that. That's more of a health department thing, so I don't know if that should be a condition added or not. I'm assuming they're already meet the standards for most of those, those issues, so I don't know why we would need a condition. Sounds like they already do speed bumps, which can be a great way to, to slow down traffic. But to be able to add that as a condition is difficult for us in the zoning department to enforce. You know, we get comments from the traffic engineers. I would assume that they would have made comments if they were worried about cars flipping over onto Twenty-Fifth Street and going too fast through there. I think once that lot to the south gets redeveloped, that'll probably do a lot of traffic calming already because it won't be a straight shot through there. You'll have that landscaping and you'll have that different, different use there. Even if it is a parking lot, they still gonna have to have an offset with the landscaping and stuff. So it sounds like they like to do that with the, with the speed bumps, those portable ones, which I think is a great idea. I just don't know if it's appropriate for us to mandate it on a conditional use permit.
Jason, how about hours of operation? Have we ever put anything like that on this W use?
You know, we used to do that quite a bit for, for conditional use permits. It really becomes difficult to enforce, to stand out there and hours of operation. And honestly, most of the time, they work for, you know, a year, and then people don't really care. I know with the Walgreens at Twenty-sixth and Minnesota, we had a, there was always a condition on that that it could only be open till like nine or ten. Well, people don't, you know, now under shape places, it doesn't have that condition, and people don't care that it's open till eleven. So eight o'clock's really not very late, in my opinion. I mean, seven o'clock during the winter. I mean, you can absolutely put those on there. They just become difficult for us to enforce because we'd have to drive there at eight o'clock at night, watch it, make sure they're shutting down and that kind of stuff, so.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jason? Okay, thank you, sir. Entertain commission action.
Mr. Chair, I move to defer this item to the June meeting for several reasons. I didn't have any questions for the applicant. It's not that I don't trust the applicant, but there's too much verbal dialogue going back and forth here. I know this is a planned concept, but quite frankly, it's insufficient for me to approve of it at this standpoint. There's just too many question marks. I'd also specifically like a traffic engineer here from the city. I'd love to close the access off of Twenty-third. They're not gonna go for that, and I guarantee you, they won't like that. I'd like to see more landscaping on the east side. I think there's certainly some bad timing right now with COVID going on and propose the applicant to hold a neighborhood meeting. You know, all these people are here indoors. I assume they'd feel comfortable going to the site, perhaps in the parking lot for an outdoor meeting. I, I'd also like to see on a site plan an depiction of exactly where the car wash portion is in the building. I know we're saying it's gonna be to the west. I could see some of the cars driving from north to south. But I'd like a depiction showing that that is the case, that the traffic's gonna flow, how we're gonna get it out onto Minnesota Avenue, hopefully. And I'd like to see some of the lighting kind of depicted on there as well. So I officially move to defer to the June meeting. I don't have issues with the use itself. It's owned properly, just needs the conditional use permit. But this application for me is not quite there yet.
I'll second that.
That was a long motion.
That was. But, Lukey, I'll second that. And the reason why I'll second that is just because I think there is a little bit to work out here. And I just don't feel comfortable moving into the next step. And the only, the whole time I've been sitting here thinking about this because this at one point, I mean, they were trying to buy that whole block. The reason why they couldn't buy that whole block is because it is a historical area. But you also have to understand, we're on South Minnesota Avenue, which is the busiest, one of the busiest streets in the state. So if this was anywhere else other than against a historical area, I mean, if we're on Forty-first Street, this would be going all the way back to, you know, the next road. So it's where I've kind of been going back and forth the whole time on what we do here because there is a little bit of concerns of, you know, noise. I know, I know, we, we office with you on fourth floor. I know you guys are great people. But it's just one of those things that we gotta kind of, also kind of protect the neighborhood too. So I know you guys would do great things, but I want them to feel comfortable that we kind of try to work some stuff out, and that's why we defer it to next month.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded now to defer this item to the June meeting. Is there any discussion?
That was my discussion.
Yeah, he's cut off from discussion now. No, I'd wanna add on to this. I too am conflicted on this one because of its location. I, I'm, Twenty-sixth and Marion is my neighborhood center. That's the one I use. I can stand at the bank I use right across the street from the other facility there. I can't hear it. Or maybe I don't because Twenty-sixth Street's right there with all the car traffic. It's just the way it is. The fact is, people will, if they wanna go south from this facility, if it becomes a car wash or whatever it becomes, they're gonna sometimes go east to get to a street that does have a lighted, signaled intersection to make that happen. It's just the way it is. I do it. It's 'cause it's safe. But I don't tear out of here like I'm test-driving a new car from Vernite. I'm gonna try out this new Evo and get on it. Yeah, if this is a car dealership, I think that is a lot less safe than what this would be. But still, I'm conflicted about it. And I would also, historic district or otherwise, I don't wanna live a block off Minnesota Avenue. I just don't. I wouldn't wanna raise kids there. I wouldn't, there's gonna be traffic. And frankly, for everyone, I'm gonna support the deferral as well to find out some additional information. But if you see someone running a stop sign, if you see someone speeding, you gotta call it in. They will show up, they will do traffic monitoring, and that'll be a lot of motivation for people to shape up. You just gotta do it.
Okay, other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the deferral to the June meeting signify that by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Item 5E petition ASP 011987 2020, alternative site plan for an alternative buffer yard located at 806 West 41st Street.
The applicant here is Paul Engel with Anderson Engineering. The applicant is proposing to construct a new O'Reilly Auto Parts store on this lot and associated parking lot. This retail use, as you can see here, is required a level-C buffer yard. As you can kind of see from the aerial, this lot is relatively skinny, really can't get much on it for a building size. So, that's where the applicant's running into difficulties with the building, is that north property line. Level-C buffer yard is required along that. And that's something that the applicant can't provide or really another building couldn't provide. The proposed RE3 form requires 10-foot front yard setbacks along West 41st Street and South Summit Avenue. Parking is required at a rate of one space per 300 square feet for a total of 24 spaces required. 33 are provided by the applicant. The submitted landscape plan indicates that required buffer yard, as you can see, kind of along the north portion of the parking lot and the east portion of the parking lot, that area, they're able to do that 30-foot buffer yard and meet all the requirements. The applicant is proposing along that north of the building, a three-and-a-half-foot setback. And instead of the six-foot fence, they are looking to do an eight-foot fence to try and screen that building from the existing neighbor to the north. And if you look at the aerial, this is one thing I wanted to bring up. Right now, if you look, if you've ever been out there, that parking lot actually goes pretty much all the way to the property line. So, there's not much of a setback there at the existing time. The submitted landscape and screening plan meets the intent of the zoning ordinance. Although the applicant will not be able to provide the required buffer yard setback and landscaping on a small portion of the site, they will provide screening by increased fence height and more green space that currently exists with the existing site. If this landscape plan is approved, the applicant can construct the building as shown. If it is, doesn't, excuse me, if it is denied, the site will, will still continue to have that zero-foot parking lot setback and, and really probably stay vacant for the foreseeable future. Just one other point, the applicant did reach out to each of those homeowners, sending them a personal letter. Specifically, they wanted to get in contact with the property owner to the north to see what they were comfortable with. They didn't hear anything back from that property owner. We did hear some, some questions from the property owner, one more to the north of that. However, we did not hear anything or, or they did not hear anything from, from the property, single-family property owner that's adjacent. Because the subject application and screening plan meets the intent of the RE3 form, staff does recommend approval of this alternative site plan. And I do think the applicant is on the phone. Paul, are you there?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, any questions for Jason first? Seeing none. Go ahead, Paul. As the applicant, state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Paul Engel with Anderson Engineering, 3213 Southwest Bypass. That's in Springfield, Missouri, 65807. I appreciate you accommodating us remotely. I would love to be there, but things are what they are. So, I want to thank your staff for all the, everything they've done to help us through this process. And like Jason mentioned, we did reach out to the neighbors and we provided them with about five different methods to interact with us. And you only received one comment that Jason referred to and that was for a lot, it's a couple lots up. So, I think it's a good compromise. We're trying to put something in. O'Reilly is a very low-impact business. It's very quiet. There's no service. On that side to the north, there will be no lighting or anything that will be shining on the neighbors. And we think it's a good layout and we're happy to answer any questions and appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, seeing none. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this item?
Make a motion for approval.
Second, Johnson.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of this item. Any discussion?
I wish a lot of landscaping would look like this and fix a lot of our problems. That's all I've got.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll be voting in favor of this. I think this is quite the improvement, quite frankly, from what's out there. I drive by this quite regularly and I also know that the neighbors of this neighborhood are very much so aware often of what's going on in their neighborhood, frankly, because of the back and forth they had with the project to the east of Norton previously. So, knowing that we haven't had an extremely large amount of concern from the neighbors, I think that gives me some comfort also, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. At this time in our agenda, we have public input on non-agenda items. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to take five minutes or less and make some comments about things that are not on the agenda? Not seeing a line forming. I think I see no takers. And entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion adjourned.
Oh, just a moment.
Sorry. I got some new business real quick here. I just, I wanted to give a shout-out to two of our planning commissioners that are no longer on the board. Normally, we get to do kind of a fun little thing with them here and a ceremony and give them their plaques and service. But obviously with COVID, we haven't been able to do that. So, wanted to give a shout-out to Andy Anderson, who was on the board for just under nine years, which is a huge commitment. And then Sharon Shantos, who was on the board for one term of five years. So, really appreciate all the work that they go. I know you guys know this. It's a lot of work. It's not just showing up to a meeting. It's, it's significant amount of your time and so we really appreciate that. And then we will have two new members as part of the June meeting, Janet Kitmans and Brandon Nieses. So, yeah.
How about a round of applause for our two?
So, I'm, I'm sure those two are watching at home, so thank you, Andy and Sharon, for all your hard work.
Yes, thank you very much.
Make a motion adjourned.
Very good. We have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Stay safe, Sioux Falls.